Good evening. We welcome you all here to our regular city council meeting. We call our meeting to order. We note that all council members are in attendance. Our opening ceremony will be by Councilmember Steve Vincent.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday was the commemoration of D-Day. And, you know, there was a part of D-Day that carries the name of Utah, and that was the Utah Beach, which played a critical role in preparing to allow the troops to roll in and be a part of a very historical event in our country's history. I've got a video that I'd like to have Jake play and then follow him. That way we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Et all Americans, in this poignant hour, I ask you to join with me in prayer. Almighty God, our sons, pride of our nation, this day of set upon a mighty endeavor, the struggle to preserve our republic, our religion, and our civil liberty, and to set free a suffering humanity. Lead them straight and true. Give strength to their arms, stoutness to their hearts, steadfastness in their faith. They will need thy blessings. Their road will be long and hard. For the enemy is strong. He may hurl back our forces, but we shall return again and again. The darkness will be red by noise and flame. Men's souls will be shaken with the violences of war. Some will never return. Embrace these, Father, and receive them by heroic service into thy kingdom as we rise to each new day and again when each day is spent. Let words of prayer be on our lips. Oh Lord, give us faith. Give us faith in thee, faith in our sons, faith in each other, faith in our united crusade that will spell a sure peace. A peace invulnerable to the feelings of unworthy men. And a peace that will let all men live in freedom, reaping the just reward of their honest trust. Thy will be done, Almighty God.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looking to see, we have more than usual here, but... And Candace will just wait to recognize you during our comment period. Next on our agenda, approval of the minutes. Motion from the council.
Mayor, I would move approval of the minutes of May 17.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Passes unanimously. It's approved. Minutes are approved. Next, we do our Employee of the Month Award on our agenda. And I believe Councilman Vincent, you have that opportunity tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's a real honor for me to go ahead and read this for Rachel. Rachel, would you mind standing? Before I read this, I'll just mention that I've had two sisters that have been through domestic violence. And so, this is dear to my heart. Rachel is a calm in the storm of domestic violence. She provides victims a safe, a steady hand for support, and is very knowledgeable in services available to help victims in their time of need. Not only does she do this for cooperative victims, but also those who are uncooperative victims. She lets them know that West Valley victim advocates are in the background, ready, and willing to help whenever they want and need it. She is not judgmental and always starts by believing. She supports the attorneys as well. She lets us know how victims should be approached and what their worries are. She researches past issues the victims has faced and alerts the attorneys to other open, closed, or unfiled matters. She helps us resolve and protect victims. She reminds us to remember the human in the case and to carefully evaluate their position and safety concerns. Rachel should be Employee of the Month every month because of her unwavering support to all those involved in criminal cases, but especially the victims for which she advocates.
And I'm a take one every month. That's fine.
Mr. Mayor, can I take a picture since I was not hearing? How he usually does it. There we go. Thank you.
Next, we have our public comment period. And so, we've only had one sign up. And so Candace, why don't you come up from Congressman Stewart's office? Introduce yourself briefly.
Great. Candace Pucci, I'm the Director of Community Relations for Congressman Stewart. I just wanted to report back to you on our book drive with Kairos Academy. We were able to raise over 2,000 books. And our goal was 1,000. So we were pretty stoked about that. And I got a call the other day that someone had 17 more boxes of books for us. So we're actually looking for a second place to do a donation because there isn't enough space. So that was incredibly successful. And for those of you who follow Kairos Academy, one of the graduates who is 16, Team Mom Awesome Gal, got invited by the White House to attend the United States of Women Summit. And she's been invited to be on the panel out there. So it just shows the work they do really does help. And really, I just wanted to let you guys know for your constituents, because you really are the closest to the people in the community, just that we do casework. I don't think everyone knows that. But I am over military and veteran cases. So between scheduling VA appointments to the deeper issues and immigration cases, we handle all that. So I wanted to make sure if you guys could pass along the word if you hear anyone has a problem. But Congressman Stewart's been on a couple of Intelligence Committee trips recently. Just got back from China. Obviously, he's doing a lot with the wild horse population or overpopulation in southern Utah. And then the big success recently was the Zika bill that went through that President Obama ended up going through. So we're pretty excited about that. But excited to be here and become more a part of the West Valley community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there anyone else here to make public comments? Okay. With that then, our Assistant City Manager is here. Paul Isaac, any comments?
No, sir, thank you.
Council, any comments?
I'd just say to Candace, thank you for being here and coming and reporting back. And we appreciate Congressman Stewart and his service.
Thank you.
Yeah. At Kairos Academy, if you haven't been there, why, it's a pretty impressive place. Really, yes. They do great work there. With that then, we go now to our public hearings. We begin with our budget for our final quarter. This is authorizing increased revenues and some changes in disbursements of funds. This is one that we do quarterly to reflect the changes that take place. And not as typically fairly minor, but very important for the changes that take place. It typically does not change our overall budget, but is an important step that we take every quarter just to keep our budget up to date. With that, we will open the public input portion. Is there anyone here to speak to the issue of our quarterly budget adjustment? No takers. Okay. If there are none, seeing none, we'll close the public input portion. We'll come back to the council and have you consider ordinance 16-27, this budget change.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 16-27.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? For the most part, these are pretty routine. And we remind everyone that we do... This is the second time that these come before us. We always look at the items on our agenda the week before in our study meeting. With that then, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have on our agenda, application ZT-6-2016. This was filed by the city. This is to change our code regarding fireworks storage containers. Many of you have seen those fireworks on corners and in grocery store parking lots. And the fireworks must be stored in a safe way. In the past, as it turns out, and currently, the container storage... Or the storage containers are not sufficient. I guess there's a booming business in fireworks. It's grown over the years, especially with changes made recently in our state. And so, these will be expanded and will utilize, in many cases, these portable on-demand storage containers metal. And so, it's not, I don't think, a controversial item. And it does help with public safety and supported by safety officials. And of course, those who are doing the fireworks, it makes it easier for them. With that introduction then, I will open the public input portion of our meeting. Is there anyone here to speak to this change? And it looks like we have no takers on this one either. Boy, we're really discussing controversial items tonight, I guess. Okay, seeing no public input, then we'll close the public input. We'll come back to the council for consideration of ordinance 16-28 to implement this.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 16-28.
Second? We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this issue?
Just saying, Mayor, that I'm happy to see this ordinance. I think it will improve things for the vendors as well as public safety.
Thank you. Well put. Seeing no further input, then we'll turn to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to item number nine on our agenda, Resolutions. Resolution 16-93. This is to approve a memorandum of understanding between our city and its police department and the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the FBI, for the Child Exploitation Task Force. By having this in place, it allows appropriate reimbursement to take place when the city supports their efforts in these programs. And we do that on occasion. And so, having this in place is beneficial to our city. And of course, we want to continue to work with the FBI on these issues. With that introduction then, we'll turn to the council for comment or a motion on the resolution.
Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution 16-93.
Second? We have a motion and a second. It's properly before us. Any further comments? Seeing no further comments, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to item 10. This is application S-2-2016 filed by Fred Albert. And it's for final plat approval for the Albert Acres subdivision. This is at 3681 South, 5600 West. It's a fairly deep lot. And so, he has a lot of land behind his home and his workshop. And has been, over the years, looking at different options on what to do with his property. And so, this action will allow him to take one of those steps. He talked about many different items. And, oh, still back on fireworks. Got to change my computer. Get to the right place. And he was... What was he going to put in there?
Homes.
Homes back there, yeah.
Changing from a four-lot subdivision to a four-lot subdivision.
Yeah, there it is, yeah. Four-lot subdivision on 1.1 acres. It sold R1.8. And so, keep his current home, have three other homes there. And I guess the shop will remain as well that he has there. Always noticed that property because he's always had all sorts of equipment out there. His RV and his unique shop. And he was fun to talk to when I went around. Anyway, lots will be minimum to 1,000 square feet. So that's the issue there. And so, with that introduction to the council for comment or action, a motion.
Mayor, I move for approval of application S-2-2016.
Second? Properly before us. Any further comments, discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you. Now we'll consider application S-6-2016 filed by Roger Chase. This is again final plat approval for the Chase Meadows subdivision at 3380 West, 3100 South. And this will be for seven lots on a 2.26 acre parcel of ground. And they will... The average lot size will be about 10,500 square feet approximately. And it'll be accessed from 3100 South. So I think this is under our new single-family development requirements. So it meets all our current code. Everything is fine there. With that introduction then, we'll turn that to the council for comments or a motion.
Mayor, I move for approval of application S-6-2016.
Second? We have the motion properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote then to our city recorder.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. With that, we do not have a need for an executive session. So I believe that completes our business in this meeting. We will immediately have our other meetings immediately following this. So with that, a final motion for this meeting. Motion adjourned. It was. We don't have that often. With that then, all in favor of adjourned in this meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. This meeting is adjourned.
I called over the regular meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency. We have had an opening ceremony and all members of the body are present. Our first order of business are the minutes of May 3, 2016, and the minutes of May 10, 2016, special meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the minutes of May 3 and May 10, 2016.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved unanimously. Mr. Isaac, any communications or report of the chief executive officer tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, item seven on the agenda. Seven A, we have Resolution 1610, which is amending the budget of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015 and ending June 30, 2016. This is similar to in the city council meeting to reflect changes in the budget from increased revenues and other activities. And that we have a public hearing or receive public input on this resolution. So with that, we'll open the public input portion of this meeting. Is anybody here to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Resolution 16-10.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. A live motion, any discussion? I would ask for a vote.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Northvelt?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item of business, seven B, is to accept public input and consider Resolution 1611, which is adopting the annual budget for the Redevelopment Agency for this coming year, July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017. With that, we'll open the public hearing portion of this meeting. Anybody that's come to speak on this issue, now would be the time to come forward and do so. Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public input, bring it back to the council for a discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Resolution 16-11.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's call for a vote, please.
Mr. Northvelt?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our business for the Redevelopment Agency scheduled for tonight. We would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned now.
Thank you. I call to order the regular meeting of the Housing Authority. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and that all are present. We have Mr. Isaac filling in for Mr. Pyle tonight. Our next item of business is the approval of the minutes from May 3 to May 10.
Mr. Jim?
Ladies first. Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the minutes of May 3 and May 10 of 2016.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would anyone like to discuss the minutes? We'll turn to... Oh, let's hit do a vote on favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Isaac, is there anything in the way of communications or report?
No, sir.
All right, that brings us to our public hearings. Very similar to our last meeting, we have this time now that you can give public input regarding the reopening of our budget for this last quarter of this fiscal year. And so, if there's anyone who would like to speak to this issue, now is a good time to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn to the council for action on Resolution 16-03. Mr. Chair, I move for approval of Resolution 16-03.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, we'll turn to the city recorder for the vote.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Chairman Northvelt?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item is to accept public input regarding our upcoming budget for the fiscal year 2016, 2017. Would anyone like to speak to our budget for the upcoming year? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the Housing Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I would refer approval of Resolution 16-04.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to the recorder for our vote.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairman Northvelt?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have a resolution. Mr. Isaac, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. This is to authorize the expenditure proceeds that we receive from the disposition of public housing. This resolution allow... Basically represents to approve the Housing Authority to allow us to dispose of these funds.
Thank you. We'll turn to the council for any discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt Resolution 16-05.
Thank you. We have a motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. So we'll turn to you for some questions or discussion.
I just had a question on what properties were sold. Do you know?
All of the 18 housing homes the West Valley City had were sold. And that just those funds amounted to about $1.7 million.
Were those all in a single block or?
I'm not sure they sold them all in a single block.
But they were located in different areas around the city. These were single-family residences. Okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Chairman Northvelt?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our business. So we'll have one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Building Authority, our regular meeting. We've had an opening ceremony. Note that all members of the authority are present with Mr. Isaac substituting for Mr. Pyle tonight. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of May 3, May 10, and May 17. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the three bodies of minutes.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the approval of our minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
It was unanimous. Mr. Isaac, any communications or report from the chief executive officer?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. We are accepting public input regarding the issuance and sale of not more than $36 million aggregate principal amount of lease revenue and refunding bonds, Series 2016. Any potential economic impact that may have? Is there anyone here to offer input on the issuance and sale of these bonds? Seeing nobody jumping up and waving their arms, I will close the public input portion of this. And we'll move on with our next public input portion, which is again the reopening of the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget to reflect changes in the budget from increased revenues and authorized dispersment. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Very well, we'll close the public input and turn it to the Building Authority. I was sure everybody was waiting for the Building Authority meeting to make comment, but I will move for approval of Resolution 16-04.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Canning?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to seven C, public input regarding the adopting of the tentative budget for the Municipal Building Authority of West Valley City for the fiscal year 2016-2017. Anyone here to speak to that budget? Seeing no one, we'll close the public input portion of this and turn it to the Building Authority.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of Resolution 16-05.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion of the tentative budget for next fiscal year? Seeing none, we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number eight, we completed our items for this agenda. We have one final motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?